So I'm going to recall, recall. I'm going to call a redistricting special meeting to order. I have an actual gavel instead of my phone as earlier. I'm trying to think of where we were when we left off. Fernando had given up.
No, we're just getting warmed up. This morning, we discussed the three maps under consideration by the council, V2, V3, and V4 in their current form. And we can spend as much time as you like continuing to refine those maps, but I think more important, we need to get direction from the council about what map or maps, plural, you want to take to the public hearing on Thursday, assuming that the weather allows us to hold a public hearing Thursday evening at 6:00. And second, you may want to talk about the remainder of the redistricting process. Initially, we had contemplated a series of public hearings in the community. We have now focused on one more public hearing this Thursday, possibly more at your discretion. And we've heard that some of you may be interested in holding additional work sessions, possibly with the residents of the community involved as well. So the only other activities that we have on the schedule at this time are a final map drawing session on Tuesday, March 22nd, 9:00 here, to produce a final map based on comments that you receive at the public hearings. And then Tuesday, March 29th, at your regular meeting to adopt that final map. Now, that's a long four-week break between Thursday's public hearing and your map drawing session to produce a final map. So you may wish to, either to shorten that timeframe or to fill it with productive activities that will lead you to your conclusion. So, Madam Mayor, I think those are the appropriate next steps. Again, we can spend time, if you want, refining the maps, but I think your time is probably better spent focusing on process. How you want to move toward Thursday's public hearing with one map, two maps, three maps, and then how you want to complete this redistricting process.
Okay, so it's 1:00 now. We have a CCPD meeting at 4:00 p.m., so technically, we have three hours before our next meeting to try to build consensus around one map to lead us into the public hearing on Thursday, pending weather, of course. A point of clarification, I think, that was important to me on the resolution, by no means do we limit to just one public meeting. I think we wanted to state that we were going to have at least one public meeting, which is scheduled for Thursday here at City Hall that allowed call-in option, which seemed to work well. My personal preference might be to get through Thursday's meeting and see how public interaction is based on our decisions we make today, and then as a collective body, make a determination on how many more public hearings and in what format we may need to go forward with. Before we can get to that, though, I think we probably need to go through these maps. I know Councilmember Beck expressed interest specifically on communities of interest and how those were impacted with some of these changes. I might recommend we start with our latest map from Councilmember Flores, V4, because it probably has the most differences or changes that this body hasn't talked about openly. And then we'll go to each other map. And any of you that have been most involved with listening to community and making those changes specifically for your districts, please bring those up into the attention, whether they're positive or negative in this session, so we can get all that out in the open as well. Any other input on process over the next 30, 45 minutes? Go ahead, Chris.
I completely agree with what you said. And so I just want to acknowledge that we postponed this redistricting to get bigger staff report, and we have it. And so I want us to really work to one map today for us to vote on it. So my question is, once we go through these maps, how we get to those votes, since we have three maps? So I don't know if it's...
Well, I know Leanne's grabbing a microphone. She probably has something to say about that.
All right.
Yes, we don't have an actual vote on the agenda, but certainly that you all can reach consensus.
On a map that we would take forward. So you're not voting, but we all agree. Yeah, that makes sense. But I, to your point, Chris, I think there's an interest among pretty much everyone on the table is to build consensus around one map today to take forward on Thursday. So even if it's not an agenda item, what's that? Well, you'd have to build consensus, so it's just like you go on the floor anyway. It's at least five votes to get us to consensus, or five interest points. Go ahead, Gina. One map, okay. Michelle, go ahead. Carlos?
Just a point of clarification. Fernando, I don't know how the discussion's going to go, you know, approaching this with an open mind, see where we lie ideally. You know, if we decide on one map, great. But didn't you just say, depending on, you know, so many words, one map or maps?
We could do that.
It's your decision. It's a council's decision to make.
I just personally think that you can create some confusion among members of the community, but if we have to do that, we will. I'm just, I'm being optimistic we can get to one map today.
I still say I want one map. That doesn't mean I can dictate it. That's just my preference.
Your preference, yes.
And mine was merely a point of clarification based on Fernando's...
I won't go back and forth with you, but I would like to see one map.
And I'd also like to see one map go to the community. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is our proposed map to the community. This is what, as we've gone through this process, we're taking back out. We will receive community input. And so from that community input, are we just asking them for a yea or nay? Or will we have further refine the potential map from there before we take the final vote and set the lines?
Well, the council's original intent, as set forth in the resolution that you adopted, was to present one proposed map at a public hearing, or multiple public hearings, and then, depending upon what comments you receive, to consider any appropriate revisions to that map and then adopting the map. And so it would be entirely appropriate for the public to comment about boundary changes and whatever adjustments they may consider appropriate to serve the criteria that the city council has adopted.
So with that clarification, I stand with Mayor Pro Tim Bivens in that I would like to see one map go out to the community and not multiple, so that we can focus on refining one map and reaching a goal with one map. Because I think where we have, we have made this process a little more difficult is we are entertaining, we entertain multiple maps, and so we go through the process of, you know, refining one map, and then we have to also then go to that second, or third, or fourth. And I think I don't want to put that burden on our residents.
Okay, thank you, Elizabeth. Anybody else? Okay, go ahead, Carrie.
I'll just, I'll support multiple maps.
Thank you, Carrie. Anybody else related to that? Go ahead, Leonard.
Sorry, I had a brownie in my mouth. They are. I'll support multiple maps, being, going to the public.
Okay. Anybody else on that topic? Okay. Michelle, take us through version four, please.
Maybe. Okay, so this revised version has the Como-Chisholm Trail connection. Technically, it doesn't connect, but that's something we can do afterwards. Is there a specific section of town you want to see?
Yeah, I'll start with District 3, because it was something we talked about before, a concern that Councilmember Crane brought up related to Colonial Hills. Michael, walk us through that. Michelle can zoom in.
Point, well, technically, it may follow some of the lines. All of that that goes to, and this has been confusing for the last decade as it was drawn, goes to University is all part of that. They share elementary school, they share lots of resources. So the other two maps have University as a dividing line. That's something, too. Elizabeth and I have talked about it. We both represent TCU, both parts, and I think they actually like that, that it's such a big entity that we deal with. I don't think, I know, because we've talked about it. And then, just making sense from Granberry Road over. So the way that sort of line goes down, in one of the maps, it goes straight, another of the maps, it carves out Bluebonnet Hills and keeps it in nine where it is now. I'm okay either way, but it's, if you go straight up from University up that way, that's the way it's been for a long period of time, except in the last decade, it kind of comes down and cuts in, and it's just been confusing for residents.
So right there along the University line, you believe it should be all be in three to keep a community of interest together?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, and if you go a little bit further down Overton Park, there, if you, I've talked to residents there, you see that it bifurcates Overton, the actual park. And you're very familiar with this. I know, Mayor, this area, too. They, up all the way, consider they're all part of Overton Park, too.
Okay.
That was something that I wasn't aware of, Michael, but noted.
Yeah, thanks.
Would you like us to make these changes now?
I don't know that we're, I'm not advocating to make changes. I'm just saying you wanted me, Mayor, to let...
Yeah, I think that's important, and I don't want to put words in Michael's mouth. And I've heard from a lot of people, too, that are affected in that area, that for us to get to some consensus around this map, that change would have to happen. However, it creates a ripple effect. So maybe let's not start making those changes. Let's just note that that's something we'd have to come back to. Go ahead, Elizabeth.
One, I want to address what Michael's concern was with the University dividing line, and as the person who shares that dividing line, and we have had multiple discussions with TCU, and they often do talk about how they like having the smart in the party, or however they...
I've got the fun side, she's got the business side.
They call it living and learning, but we have different words for it. And I do think also, too, the neighborhoods don't really cross over from University, with the exception of down and around Bluebonnet Circle, because it's a circle. And so I know we'll get to District 9 proper and that, but I just wanted to speak to that. And then if you could zoom out just a little bit, because I know technically on this map, it is in six, but it's District 3, and that's Como. And so...
Yeah, they pulled a lake into three, I see.
Yeah, so this actually splits the entire community of interest for Como. And so I, there's been so much discussion about that particular community and what's appropriate for it, and taking away that lake where we're seeing a lot of positive development and putting it in a separate district is, I can't support that.
Michelle, there was a moment that we were talking to you about this area, and it was a software issue that we could not resolve. That's why you don't see connectivity there, right? You may recall that.
Yes, that is correct. In the other map versions, the way they get around that is Sunset Heights goes to three, and that creates that connectivity buffer.
Okay, and we were open to that. But like I said, I couldn't find a way to resolve it. I deferred to other people. Ultimately, it got to you, and I was told that you have the know-how how to do it, so...
Yes, so that those adjustments can be made. I just didn't know that I had the authority to make them.
Okay.
Even with those changes, the population between Sunset Heights and then all the neighborhoods that Michael just described, it's, and Mayor said this is going to create ripple effects, so it's not as simple of a change.
Okay. Any other issues with three? Since I called Michael out first, we'll go back to Carlos's district in a second. I didn't mean to go over it. Presumably, Carlos, you're obviously happy with the way D2 looks, but is there anything of interest that you want to call out here that's significant in District 2 that this body may not be aware of?
Well, as far as District 2, I think that, you know, where we have it right now is in good shape. You know, in prior maps, V2 had a problem in going further north in that it diluted Hispanic, you know, that representation. You know, in talking to staff about it, the feedback we got from legal counsel, you know, that's something that, you know, we need to avoid. So that's why in iterations...
So it looks like, sorry to cut you off, but it looks like east of 35 right there? If I can compare it to Councilmember Nettles' version, you've taken that piece into D2? And is that likely because you're trying to increase the Hispanic VAP in D2?
Yes, and also, I have heard, and I know that council has heard, input from the Riverside Alliance about their affinity or desire to be in District 2. So once I heard that, we tried to keep that in mind into the map-making sessions, because up until a certain point, they hadn't really, they've only vocalized saying they want to be in A District, but it was only recently that they articulated D2. So hence the efforts there.
Any other items? And now I'm going to Carrie, do you want to call out there that's significant in District 2? Carlos?
Again, just what I said up there in the north. You know, around, around the area of Rockwood there, as it goes into Ohio Gardens and into Crestwood, you know, I spoke to Leonard about it. There's nothing really noteworthy there, you know, in terms of how, you know, our two districts interact.
So you didn't go quite as far north in your version here as...
Again, to avoid diluting the Hispanic that.
Okay, so you left that portion in D10?
Yes.
Okay. Any other things on that? Carlos, I'll turn to Carrie.
No, not on D2.
Okay. Councilmember Moon?
Just D2.
I'm going by district by district, yes. Yeah. And if you notice, and anybody sees anything significant, what I'm trying to do here is just sort of demystify a little bit of where some of these significant differences are. Carrie, go ahead.
Just going to point out some that you can, you do have room there to lower the Hispanic population. The voting age population still meet the strong Hispanic area for two.
Thank you. Chris, and then to Jared?
Okay, thank you. And I will just go to, as Councilman Flores talked about, the VPA, or at least the total population of District 2. In this map, it does currently have the highest in all the maps. But in each map, District 2 has the highest voting population of any race versus black, white, or Hispanics. And so I really think we have met that goal. And then if we think about the current, because I think this is also up for discussion, if we look at the current today, each district, the VPA Hispanic population is at 52%. And then in this map, it takes us up to...
67.9.
67. But in each other additional maps, I know in the version 3, it takes it to 63, which is a 10% increase. And then in version 2.4...
Yeah.
Talking about District 2, you know, right offhand, Carrie, it takes it up to 67%.
Okay.
And so the comment that I'm making is that I think all of us have worked the roundtable to make sure that District 2 is well taken care of as far as the Hispanic vote. And we'll get to that. But when we think about, and this, my comments to District 2, when we think about the percentage for black votes, again, in most of the districts, we don't go up to 36%. And so I just want the council to know that for two, we have got it to where we feel that is comfortable. 52% has elected Flores, has elected Sal Espino and other Hispanics in that district. And I think if you get it up to 63, it's going to do the same. I currently represent Riverside, and they have given us sentiments that they want to stay in one district. And not to say that this is not true or false, I don't know, I just haven't heard that part of them saying they want to be in District 2. And so those are just my comments. But I can try to send some emails out. I think we have representation from Riverside as well, Alliance, but...
Mr. Herring said that he had sent communications to Mayor and Council on that. That's all I know.
Right. And Riverside Alliance is only one area, because you have three different other Riverside in there that's going to be affected if we put them all in one district. So, I mean, I'm not arguing that fact that they want to be in two. I'm just saying, I just haven't heard that.
Thank you, Chris. Go ahead, Jared.
Mayor, I would just add, you know, when we look at the Hispanic C-VAP citizen voting age population, in all three maps, it's well over 50% for District 2. And I see, even with, in version 3, where it went far north, the citizen voting age population is 52%, which is extremely high in a good way, right, for Latino opportunity. And I think that's important to note, because when we add Riverside into District 2, we're increasing even further above that 53% citizen voting age population, which in effect limits the ability of us to represent our communities of color across the city by essentially packing Riverside into District 2, when there's other opportunities that we're trying to accomplish in this map. So I just want to make that caveat.
Councilmember Bivens?
The only thing I'll share is, I think there are several ways to engage in this discussion. When any council member who is drafting a map creates a problem or a situation where you're pulling from another council member's district for a certain desired goal, you need to at least have conversation. And so with me, there was conversation had when I was told if I got, you know, let part of Poly go, that that would help, you know, the chances of another Hispanic district come about, and I was in agreement with that. And so I think it's important to talk to each other, not just whatever kitchen cabinet we all may have, but have the conversations with the council members who represent those districts that we are cutting out or slicing and doing switcheroo's on, because the council member is the one who has those interactions with people. And if we hadn't had a conversation, I would not even have stopped six anymore, because somebody outside of this table decided that that would work best. They didn't know. I know the district, and everybody around this table knows their own district.
Thank you, Gina. Anything else? Go ahead, Leonard.
Thank you, Mayor. So I think we haven't spent a lot of time really talking about the north side of the city, which my office is starting to get a lot of calls about. And, you know, the difficult thing there is the population growth is still significant. The construction that's underway is still significant. It may not be, we may not be accounting for that population, but it's coming. And arguably, for the next 15, 20 years, there's going to be a great deal of population growth up there, as there will be in, you know, arguably, the west side, most significantly out towards Wall Street. So the question is, and I think this came up the other day, I got this a couple times, is how can we anticipate that growth? And it's not there, but we know it's coming. And there's a concern about folks being disenfranchised up there, because it's going to be either undercounted today, or, you know, the delta between the two districts is relatively small now, but is going to grow really quickly. I think that came up last week, maybe, Fernando, and how did we explain that?
Yes, sir. If you think about it, the total population in Fort Worth, according to the 2020 census, was 918,000. That means that the average district for the 10 districts would be a population of 91,800. It would be generally a good practice to set the population of the fast-growing districts at a lower number, because by the end of the decade, it's going to exceed the other, the slower-growing districts by considerable margin. Example, of course, the Councilman of Foreston would be District 7. District 7 is almost twice the size of the least populous district in Fort Worth. And so we know that the districts north of Loop 820, and perhaps even those west of 820, will be growing rapidly. We can reasonably expect that according to our projections, and therefore, it would be a good practice to set those fast-growth districts at a lower population, perhaps as much as 5% below the average, and set the slower-growing districts above the average, perhaps as much as 5%. So as long as the deviation from the most populous to the least populous does not exceed 10%. So that would be our response, and I think that's the concern that you're hearing from many constituents north of Loop 820. They use the term "one person, one vote." I think what they mean is that they don't want to be overpopulated, and there's no way to prevent that in the long run, but what you can do to diminish the impact is to start at a lower level.
And is there a legal question there, Fernando, or...
That's just a good practice in redistricting, but as long as you meet the 10% range, I think you're fine.
Okay, okay. I have just one other question for the map, if I could. So the major difference between really version, call it 2, and 4 versus 3, is the west of 820 and south of White Settlement. And that area is kind of the biggest piece that's different. Just wanted to get your opinion on that, Michael, and what the difference is to you.
You mean between which map and 4? Either 2 or 3 against 4?
2 or...
3 against 4? The whole Chapel Creek area? For the reasons you just brought up, and Fernando just brought up, I mean, yeah, that's a fast-growing area. You've heard me talk about all the growth that's happening out there. So putting that in with a faster-growing, and you're looking at the numbers you brought up, yeah, it's, it makes sense to split it up a little bit for that growth that you're talking about in either 2 or 3.
Yeah, okay, okay. Mayor, just one thing to finish. In terms of maps for our public discussion, I'm just not sure people are aware enough that, of the domino effect. If we make a change here, in, you know, that people are, of course, very interested in their neighborhood, in their district, and want to focus on that, rightfully so, but maybe not as in tune with the consequences of that. So if we were to go out with more of a, here are two kinds of proposals, let's talk about them, and then get input and have the conversation such that, well, if you change that, we've kind of done this here, here are the ramifications of that. There's more of an opportunity to explain the process and the evolution to get to one place. So I'm just wondering if it's still yet a little premature to focus on one.
Well said. You were done. I'll make sure. Okay, go ahead, Chris.
I would just kind of go back to, and the, the point that's been made is practical and makes sense. But as we are drawing these maps, and we talked about this last week, and we talked about it in the previous, that we cannot draw a map on future forecasts, because although we know that there's going to be growth in far north forward, but there is going to be some natural growth in District 6, in the, where the Chisholm Trail is as well. And so I think that I practice that today, that we should be drawing a map of the effects of what the population is today. And then if we draw the maps according to what we perceive, then that's where we're going to get into neighborhoods. And I think that, are we going to draw versus community of interests today, or are we going to draw towards future? Because if we draw towards future, there's going to be a lot of communal interest that's going to be out of 7, 3, and 6 to try to make more space for the growth that is to come. I mean, yeah. And so, I mean, right now, I think 7 has 150, versus the lowest is at 88. And so I don't think that we can truthfully do that, that Fernando talked about, the 7 being smaller versus another district being larger. I mean, because if you look at the map, that 7 and 11, they cover a land portion more than a lot of these other districts do. And so I think it's just going to be hard to draw a map towards the future. And that's just my thoughts.
I'd like to add something to that, too. We know with the census that communities of color consistently are severely undercounted. And so that's another factor to consider, that although if we were to draw for growth moving in any district, right, and not consider to undercount in communities of color, we're essentially packing them even more by adding known population from high-growth areas to communities of color that we know... from high-growth areas to communities of color that we know already are undercounted and further increasing um uh the amount of folks that uh a representative in a community of color will have to represent. Um, and so we create the reverse effect. So I support what Chris said. I think it's important that we um draw the map um right now for the communities of interest. And we have um lots on record um about what communities of interest all across the city wants. And so I think we're pretty clear on on what the map uh can look like um with honoring the voices of communities of interest. So just wanted to add that to what.
Councilmember Bivins.
And I just have a question of Fernando because, you know, for me, I'm just a real black-and-white kind of person. Uh, Fernando, I thought I heard you state previously that we do not draw maps for growth. Is that an ironclad rule or is that something that we can be subjective on? I may have misinterpreted it.
You you draw maps based on the twenty-twenty census uh population figures. Now, as as you draw maps, you may or but are not required to take into account uh projected growth uh for different districts uh so as to ensure that by the end of the decade, the districts will remain reasonably balanced in respect to population. Uh, that's entirely a policy question for the the council to 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 resolve. But it's generally a good, it's it's generally a good rule of thumb. Uh, all things being equal, now, we have to take into account, as Councilwoman Williams has pointed out, uh, the uh historical tendency uh to undercount uh persons of color. That is a, that is a uh demonstrable uh fact. Uh, and 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 if the co- if the communities of color happen to coincide with the slow-growth districts, that would argue against uh setting the the fast-growth districts at a at a at a lower level. However, all things being equal, it does make sense to to set the the fast-growth districts below the average and the slower-growth districts above the average.
So if if we were to plan for growth, would that data come from Mark McAvoy's department? And have we?
We typically rely upon uh population uh forecast from the North Central Texas Council of Governments, which we then interpret and apply to our own geography.
Have you all given us that data to do this? Or or would this be another new cog?
I I don't think you need to get into a lot of sophisticated modeling about population forecasts. I I would just say as a rule of thumb, uh, we know that um uh the neighborhoods around Alliance are likely to to grow rapidly. So given uh the choice, you might start uh the district around Alliance at a at a figure below ninety-one thousand.
But historically, it's always been based on the census.
It's based, you you're obligated to use the twenty-twenty census results for redistricting. And beyond that, it's it's your call.
Well, we may as well just throw everything out the window and keep on coming up with new ideas, or else we we're never going to get a map. So that's just my frustration right now.
Carrie, did you have something? Elizabeth?
I appreciate your perspective, Leonard. And I can imagine it's hard to represent a district that is overpopulated. And I also think it speaks a lot that you're concerned about our future colleagues and what that would look like for them, not just the folks that you're hearing from. My rebuttal to that is this map shouldn't be the time or place that we're having a discussion about inequitable growth in our city. But since we wanted to bring it up, let's talk about it. Let's talk about the fastest-growing areas in our city and what they look like demographically. And so maybe this is, our retreat is coming up. The discussion we have is not how we draw maps to continue to have rapid growth in white, wealthy areas, but what we're doing as a council to spur development and open land in those areas that are our minority opportunity districts and are slower growth because we haven't invested in them.
Carrie?
I'll just point out some numbers. Um, I I think we've all tried to listen to every neighborhood, whether it be, to be fair, uh, to make a fair uh consideration for their requests, whether it be Como, as we saw that we wanted to try to get them a into a district with a matching demographic to the neighborhood. We've seen that with Stop Six to try to be fair. We've seen that um with Carter Riverside, Oakhurst, Bonnie Bray. We've seen that with Stone Glen, Park Glen, uh, getting Echo Lake and Worth Heights in there, historic South Side, um, just one neighborhood after another. Um, the truth is, there's there's one councilman that lives north of Eight Twenty. And this is, there's two hundred seventy thousand people north of Eight Twenty. And representing cities the size of Waco and Denton can both fit in those areas. And uh demographics shouldn't matter when you're trying to be fair um to a, to an area. Um, their schools are good. We know that Alliance Town Center, I'm sorry, Alliance Area is going to be the largest job center in DFW, surpassing DFW Airport by twenty-twenty-five. We we saw the presentation last week where BNSF uh intermodal is the busiest um intermodal in in the U.S. It's a large inland port with air freight, with um, with uh Interstate I thirty-five. And I just think it's incumbent upon uh council to be diligent in their planning. We're not required to account for growth, but I just think it's irresponsible to not account for growth. And not picking on District Nine, but let me just go over a couple of numbers. Um, District Nine grew four thousand people from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty census. Um, District Seven grew seventy thousand people. And that impacts planning. We, I'm grateful that we were able to, as mayor and council, we were able to get funding for roads um for that area. But keep in mind, it did take eight years to get our first police station up there. Ten years for our second library for two hundred seventy thousand people. And those folks vote. And um, nothing to take away from the representation that's been there. But the bottom line is when you're driving those roads and um going to those, pick up those kids to school or waiting at the train station, at the at the the train crossing for ninety minutes, nine zero, wait for the for the uh BNSF um train to pass, you know, your kid's on that school bus, um, it negatively impacts that experience. And and um, I just believe that part of our reasoning in twenty, I don't believe, I know, part of our reason in twenty-sixteen to take this vote to the public, to say, do you want to increase for council from eight to ten precision positions? It was done specifically to accommodate the growth. But yet, these new maps that are drawn, with the exception of version two, version three and four, the districts inside the loop are all at eighty-six to eighty-seven thousand. And that's not where the growth is going to be. And all the districts outside the loop are at ninety-seven thousand. Map two is conversely. It has interior loops, in- inside the loop at um ninety-four to ninety-six thousand. And outside the loop, where most likely to see growth, is going to be at um the eighty, eighty-seven, eighty-eight thousand. So that's just my sentiment on that.
I I would like to add to that. Um, Carrie, I completely understand uh where you're coming from. And I think all around this table, we um entered this journey to honor the growth that happened up north. And we did that by creating two districts. Um, in fact, the reason why on version three, District Four is the uh drawn the way it is is because almost to the T, it drew it exactly how the residents of Heritage and Park Glen asked for it to be drawn. And it's the only map that gets as close as how they described it. And so we are, in fact, accommodating that growth and planning for that growth by creating two new districts up north. Um, what I won't do, I mean, I think what I won't support um is that we um, that we go beyond that consideration and we start diluting opportunities for all of the other priorities that we set as a council, including opportunities for communities of color on this map. And so um, I I I say that to say I agree with you in the value that we need to honor the growth up north. And I and I would argue that um version three is the only one that really did it the way the residents of North Forward asked for it.
Just if I can add one other thing, uh, I mean, I think it's worthwhile to to mention that, you know, we we can't ignore the comprehensive plan that we are managing around uh the city is and and staff is inclusive, of course, of the ETJ's and annexations of property and growth that's coming. Um, and that's just part of the long-term strategy for uh the city. It is what it is, and there are very good reasons for that. Um, so that's not going to stop, and that growth's not going to stop. Um, so we can anticipate that. But again, I would just say the, what we hear from folks up north is they have been left behind because of all of the growth that um uh has happened there when, for a good period of time, they just haven't felt fairly represented. Um, we just, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't make that mistake again.
Carlos?
I understand where everyone is on this. Um, being part of the city's um census committee, part of that data, we poured through it, you know, Fernando, was indicative of growth areas. Okay, the census provided that. We can't completely ignore it. Does it factor into redistricting as we go through these uh map iterations? Yes, to some degree. Uh, by observation, you know, I'm just going to touch on communities of interest for a moment. You know, we have that defined to us more than once. You know, what community of interest boundaries are. And then, you know, factored into that, there are nuances when it comes to uh certain neighborhood association boundaries, right? Not always the same, but we all struggle to fairly capture these in any maps that we do. More importantly, and again, I've said this before in so many words, and I'm going to come back to equitable proportionality, all right? In in trying to arrive at a map, I kept this in mind in the city where the Anglo-Hispanic and African-American percentages of citizen voting age, which, you know, we've tried to uh focus on, are forty-six point six percent, twenty-seven point two percent, and twenty point one percent respectively. Again, going back to the redistricting point of ten-member council with five Anglos, three Hispanics, and two African-Americans would be roughly proportional to that. And I'm just speaking from a numbers standpoint. But the takeaway is this: equitable proportionality. When I go through these exercises, I just try to keep returning to the numbers just to try to achieve that goal. And I think that in spirit, we all are trying to find that way, okay? So those are my comments, Fernando.
I'm so glad you brought up equitable proportionality, Carlos, because I completely agree. Um, where I, where my my um belief differs in a bit is that um as representatives, my representation doesn't stop for eighteen-year-olds. Um, my nephew, who is thirteen, also deserves equitable representation. And so when we look at the datas of our population, um, not excluding those under eighteen, um, it's thirty-seven percent, Fernando, please help me with this. It's about thirty-seven percent Latino, thirty-seven percent white, um, and twenty percent black. And so if we use C-VAP, we essentially underrepresent communities of color um because um the voting age of our white population is higher. Um, it doesn't account for the kids um that um live in our Latino communities and our brown and our black communities. And I think that's an important data to talk about when we talk about equitable proportionality, is looking at all of the residents of Fort Worth, those who are eighteen and those who will be eighteen someday, uh, God willing. So I just want to make that distinction.
Chris, did you have something?
Um, yes, I I was just going to respond to a couple of the comments. And I I think we're touched on seven and ten now, and I want to move to eight. But I want to have uh discuss those comments. Um, and, you know, uh, Councilman Moon is right, uh, that one individual, one council member lives north of Eight Twenty. However, um, in the new maps, in all three new maps, you're going to have three different districts north of Eight Twenty, represented by three different people. And so I I don't, I I think we need to be careful around the word "fair" uh be, uh, because one council member represents one district. And it's, it's a bunch of us sitting around this table, nine of us. And so we all have a say in how this this map should be th- drawn. And again, I'm going to say again, we are not here to uh vote a map in for growth. We're here to vote a map in, offer the report and the census. We're also here to vote a map in because we have the reports from bigger staff. We have the numbers. And I truly believe that we have one of the best councils today than we ever had. And I think to answer uh Firestone's question is about poor representation. Well, it is incumbent on us to change that perspective. If it was poor representation before twenty-one June fifth in District Eight, it's my goal to make sure that they receive representation. So we can't draw a map off of what the previous council didn't fix roles on north side. They allowed the growth to go. They didn't fix the role, they fi- didn't fix the infrastructure. Well, now, the city of Fort Worth made a complete change, overhaul of council. They voted a new council in here so that we can change the narrative. And so we're not going to vote, I'm not going to support a map that's going to fix the problem that another council had. I'm going to support a map of my colleagues today that I feel that we can represent. And I truly think that all of us are going to be uh good representatives going forward into the next years. And so I think those are the maps that we want to talk about. And I want to move to District Eight if we're done with seven and the and ten.
That's fine, we can go to eight.
I'm just trying to move us along. We talked about three, two, seven. Yes, I know. Okay. Um, and so when we talk about uh fairness and representation and um equity and we talk about um growth, uh District Eight um completely in this map uh is is landlocked. Um, and it also destroys several nativehoods of community interest. Uh, being, uh, it takes Hollin Hills out of District Eight, who has been truly vocal. Uh, that's going to be right there of twenty, uh, down a little farther. Farther, farther, right there. Um, Hollin Hills, who is a major voting block, about five hundred uh voters. This map also in District Eight. And one of the things that I had um put in play when I was running is about economic development, tax incentives or uh tax coming into the district and trying to build on those taxes to fix our roles and our infrastructures. In this map, District Eight loses Alcon, Millerboro, Mrs. Berry's Bread, the new industrial park uh that we're going to compete with North Fort Worth, uh, that we have a lot of businesses that are coming south of um uh Sigma School Road, Everman Parkway. Uh, I have met with several industrial uh parks. Uh, I think we have about ten. And uh, major companies is going to bring sixty thousand dollars. So that's been taken out of District Eight. And um, also, uh, you take out the portion of Berry and Riverside Southwest. And then when you look at uh Oak, uh, let's see. I believe it's uh Oak Ridge. This is map four still. Uh, Oak Ridge, community of interest, right there that she has it on. In all the maps that we have, uh, it splits it up. Is is it split up here and was it corrected? Oak Ridge, right there where you have it. Uh, it's a community of interest that I, uh, that District Eight currently represents. And if you look at it, it it purposely takes out a group of Hispanics to build up District Eleven Hispanics. Um, and just looking, um, and for those reasons, I'm having a hard time supporting uh this map because I don't think that we should limit a district to support another district to try to get an opportunity district. And my last comment on that is when I look uh at uh District Eight being completely split up from eight to eleven, um, and I look at the demographics and um, and if it's okay if I talk about eleven, because half of those things is represented by District Eight now. Um, you have Rosemont, uh, that's represented by nine. And if you come on down, you um, Hollin Hills is the first quadrant. Uh, you come down a little bit farther on the uh west side of thirty-five. You have Hallmark, you have Camelot, you have Willow Creek, uh, that's completely uh torn up right there. Uh, you have uh Garden Acres coming a little farther. Uh, although the numbers, I think, um, uh, Fernando talked about, the numbers are there for Hispanics, but the voting block is not there. And so I have a problem with supporting this map because you dilute District Eight to try to get Hispanic in District Eleven, and a Hispanic will probably not win District Eleven.
Because you're arguing, Chris, sorry, just to be clear, that those areas that are placed in District Because you're arguing, Chris, sorry, just to be clear, that those areas that are placed in District eleven, your voter turnout is traditionally not high enough to justify.
Right, I'll jump in, those are historically, all the neighborhoods you mentioned are historically black neighborhoods. And so, short of Rosemont and Worth Heights, as you go below twenty, I mean, it's mostly black and white neighborhoods, especially when you get down to Burleson. There's a lot of influential wealthy neighborhoods that are majority white. And so in effect, you're diluting the voting strength of Rosemont and Worth Heights by adding all of those.
In those D-eleven.
Exactly.
And, you know, I have been very vocal on establishing a second strong Hispanic district. And so, this kind of scares me that we will not get that second Hispanic district, and not sure what we would get out of this district. And so, I just, that's the point I'm trying to make. And other than it breaks up the neighborhoods that I talked about, and the industrial and the business and the life and the bread of District Eight currently as it sits.
Carlos.
Respectfully, I have a slightly different outlook on that, in the sense of how we proceeded to create District eleven. The point was not for dilution, but actually looking at specific Hispanic areas that historically, you know, have voted to comprise D-eleven. So, in, you know, in the version three of the map, the Hispanic C-VAP in D-nine is sixteen less than Hispanic VAP. In that same map, you know, in regards to D-eleven, that's thirty-two percent less than the Hispanic VAP. Rosemont and Worth Heights, you know, they came up in the conversation, have less immigrants, therefore, that's why, you know, they were chosen. I'm going to, I'm going to try to encapsulate what legal counsel said again. You know, from, from a voting rights perspective, it's important, and this is not me speaking, this is legal counsel, to seek opportunities, you know, for Hispanics and for African Americans. Going back to the proportionality argument, since Hispanics constitute the larger of the two groups, and one where there has been lesser historic representation, a first priority should be to seek representation for that group. And that goes towards how D-eleven was comprised. And we may differ, you know, in, in our assessment of it, but I think, you know, maybe some comments, you know, from legal staff to that point, because there was a concerted effort, again, to build D-eleven to be a functional, you know, Hispanic opportunity district, in response to what legal counsel has pointed out. So, you know, we're, the thought was, again, to look for those Hispanic areas that tend to vote, right? Not with the intention of going in and, you know, and trying to break up any, any other communities of interest, but concentrating on those Hispanic areas that do vote. So it's more than just trying to shore up percentages, but actually to, you know, to really, you know, build up meaningful numbers. Again, this is debatable. I don't know, you know, when you start accounting for those that are non-citizens, you know, immigrants that don't vote, can't vote. I, I don't have a hard, fast percentage to say, ah, well, you just factor off this much and you have your number. I've asked around, no one agrees to that, so I ain't going to try to establish that. But the point is, you have to establish some quality numbers, build them up, with that in mind, that the resulting number, the effective numbers can be less.
And I would agree, and, and, and I want to say, I want to say first, Carlos, we're on the same team. I, I want to do exactly what you're saying. But when I look at this map, because a majority of District eleven is where I ran, and because of that area that you have highlighted is why I'm sitting here today, because they historically came out and voted for me versus the farther south, farther north. And so, although Rosemont and, and west, east thirty-five historically vote better or more than another Hispanic district, they don't have enough strength to outvote the black and the Anglos that are in District eleven as of today. And so, and words are one thing, but black and white is two different things. And in black and white, this District eleven is not a strong Hispanic winnable district. And we want another Hispanic, at least I do, I'm going to speak for myself. And so, I'm cautioning us in this map, that if we want a true Hispanic district, this is not the area where it's going to work.
So I'm just interpreting this for those watching, from you, Chris, so tell me if you're wrong here. But we're looking at the numbers, and your concern is, the percentage looks good, but when you break down based on strong African-American turnout, even if it's only at twenty percent, when you factor in citizenship and other things with Hispanic voter turnout, plus your white VAP, you're concerned that an actual outcome wouldn't be achieved with the way it's currently drawn?
Yeah, because of, correct, and Spinks Airport is in here, and around Spinks Airport, there's Fort Worth. Those houses are six hundred thousand dollars and up, wealthy Anglo-Americans that, I mean, we all know that, you know, sometimes campaigns can be a money game. And I just don't truly think that a Latino Hispanic can win this. And that's just what my fear is. I want another seat, but I don't think it's.
You're concerned about that, okay. Carrie, were you going to say anything there? Did it go back to you, Elizabeth? Yeah, go ahead, Carrie.
I just want to summarize the data from Bigger Staff that we hired, so we wouldn't have to debate these points as much. And there's always some element of debate. There are basically, all three of the maps, everything you're saying right now about District eleven in map four can be said about District eleven in map three, based on the Bigger Staff summary. All three maps have five designations for majority-minority districts.
Minority opportunity.
Sorry?
Minority opportunity districts.
Yeah, yeah, but there's different classifications for that. There's strong, and we, we, all three maps have one Hispanic strong. All three maps have two African-Americans strong. And, and we saw this on the slide earlier, y'all, y'all provided it. All three maps have African-American opportunity. So that's four right there. And we, we got one left in each one. Map four, that we're talking about now, has District eleven as Hispanic and, Hispanic and African-American opportunity. And that's going to be the same classification for map three. So just keep in mind these arguments, because they'll flip when we're talking about map three.
Just to correct, in Bigger Staff, it does say Anglo. Can we pull that up? I just don't want no misinterpretation. In the report that Bigger Staff gave, District eleven says opportunity for Anglo or black to win that district. In map four.
Yeah, the, the letter says it's described as a Hispanic opportunity district, but it is similarly a district where African-Americans or Anglos have an opportunity to be elected.
Is that the Bigger Staff report? Okay, I rest.
Well, we're pulling that up. Sorry, Carrie, were you?
Good. I just wanted to clarify, I mean, I have that listed based on, I sent this somewhere to you all, and you clarified it is a Hispanic or African-American opportunity, and it's fair to label it that.
Yes, but, but there are degrees, and I'm going to jump in there, back to a point that has been made before by several of us. You have to account, you know, again, you know, even if you're, if you're talking about that, because the immigrant population, the number is unknown, okay? When you're talking about the Hispanic population, you have to account for some reduction factor, wish I knew what the heck that was, but I don't. But the generally rule of thumb, the bigger or, or higher your numbers are with percentages, which V-four is, makes for a better case for that opportunity district. And right now, I'm just talking in regards, you know, to, to the Hispanic population. So again, agree, you know, Bigger Staff is speaking, you know, giving its input, you know, to the two maps. You know, they, they achieve the same thing, but one does it better than the other, okay? And how we got to that point, you know, again, we're, we're going to have our own opinions. And I, you know, I respect my council members' opinions, okay? We're all trying to work for the same thing here.
So, I'd like to move on to District nine, if we could, for just a minute. I, I think we could probably debate opportunity and what that means, strong versus likely versus almost or possible.
And as we're going to District nine, Elizabeth can walk us through any concerns that she has. To summarize, Councilmember Nettles' concerns on behalf of District eight, sounded like some of the major corporate corridor, commercial opportunity there is not in District eight anymore, which you're concerned about. And then the second oversimplifying your commentary was that you're concerned that D-eleven wouldn't actually elect a Hispanic member. And that's up for debate, because Carlos was pretty clear in how he felt too. But just trying to summarize that for the public. Thank you.
Also, in all fairness, this does not look like what I saw yesterday, and so we might need to do some zooming in. If you could turn on the neighborhood boundaries, that would be incredibly helpful in, in this process. But I also just, I want to point out to, while we're doing that, to Councilman Nettles' concern. We cannot guarantee the outcome of any election in these maps. There is no guarantee. We know historically what it takes, but there are so many factors that go into the outcome of election beyond like population, voting for like population. And when it comes to some of the areas that we've discussed here, going into District eleven, Rosemont, Worth Heights, Shaw Clark, they did not vote as a cohesive block in this last election. In fact, it's quite split. They had a Hispanic, a Latino candidate who worked really hard from Rosemont. And as I look at the, the results, even that neighborhood was split, Worth Heights was split. And so, I, I just want to remind us that we cannot, and we should not be in the business of trying to, to forecast an outcome. We should do our best as a council to provide an opportunity for a great leader to step up and, and be able to join us on the dais. And so, I am committed to that wholeheartedly, that we should provide as much opportunity as we can. Now, with that being said, if you could scroll in. So, this map has two neighborhoods split. It has Rosemont and it has South Hills. I, I cannot support splitting particularly South Hills. I'm going to give some perspective on Rosemont, because I have been in communication with them, some members of that community today. So that particular portion of Rosemont that you see going into District nine doesn't have a lot of population. It's a lot of industrial and warehouses. We face a lot of zoning cases, and a lot of them get contentious. And as Mr. Moon pointed out, District nine didn't have a lot of population growth, because we don't have land. We're building up, we're redeveloping. And so when it comes to areas like Rosemont, they shouldn't be split, because oftentimes, redeveloping an industrial part of a, of a neighborhood has a massive impact on the residents. And I think the person who makes that ultimate decision as to what happens there should, should also have to answer to the residents that live there. And so I cannot support splitting that neighborhood for that reason. That being said, I know Rosemont has identified themselves as a community of interest with Worth Heights and Shaw Clark and some other neighborhoods. And so, to that extent, they should be, keep, kept together. Whether they go in District nine or District eleven is up, up for debate.
Just for more clarification, Elizabeth, the, the, the pink piece that's currently a nine, that's west of Rosemont, that is Rosemont.
Correct.
It's just not included
Correct.
in the neighborhood lines.
Correct. And then, we're also splitting up South Hills.
Into two parts.
Into two parts. That happens to be the neighborhood in which I don't just represent, but I live, along with several of our district directors. And so.
Do you mind zooming in on that, if you can, Michelle? Thank you.
And what I can tell you about that particular neighborhood is that the farther east you go, the more Hispanic it does, it does get. And so we're bifurcating a neighborhood.
What's the dividing line used there, Carlos?
Yeah, it's just neighborhood streets.
Yeah, that's what it is. To, to the point, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Elizabeth, when, with looking at that area in Rosemont, the area that you diluted to is commercial, there, there are many warehouses there.
Correct.
It's only about seven percent total of Rosemont, is that right?
Correct.
Around there, I don't know an exact.
Right, there's not a ton of population there, but with its close proximity to the neighborhood. I think whoever makes those, what that does is, I, we're, I'm not going to be here forever. I step off of this council, you have someone else replace me. Maybe I get voted out next time, who knows? Someone else comes in, and they don't have an affinity for working with their neighbor the way that I often get to do with colleagues here, and maybe they have new folks that do so as well. And so if we're splitting a neighborhood like that, that means that the person making those zoning changes is not accountable to the people that are impacted the most by that. And so I, I don't think that that is a, a good move at all. And South Hills is a large neighborhood, it is a very active neighborhood association. It's cohesive, and it's been split solely on the basis of race, and that I don't think is, is, is good, is good policy. And then, if we can keep scrolling, Michael's already discussed the university issues. And if you could go down below the loop, do you, yeah, and Jared could help me get down there as well. So, I'm just saying, I love Wedgewood, it's where I grew up. Wedgewood is, is home for me. But we're going down, and once again, we're cutting up neighborhoods. One of our criteria was that we wanted identifiable boundaries. I don't know what boundary that is. I have no idea what road or roads those are, because it is, it is a hodgepodge. And then I'll let Councilman Williams speak to, to his opinion on those particular areas and cutting them up. And then we can go, we can go a little north when we're done.
Yeah, I'll be really quick. It splits several neighborhoods here, far southwest, Candle Ridge. It splits Wedgewood, Square. I mean, all three of those neighborhoods are really important communities of interest. And we're talking about like, what makes Wedgewood and Southwest Fort Worth, you know, neighborhoods what they are today. And I, I wouldn't support this at all, the way it was cut up.
And, and I also want to just put on the record, my concern with Rosemont definitely is this bifurcation of live versus work. But I do want to recognize that the leadership of Rosemont and the, the folks of Rosemont are wholeheartedly supportive of a second Latino opportunity district. There's a preference that it go in, in the south side, if, if at all possible. But I, I do want to make sure that I'm speaking correctly for that particular constituent group.
And I did hear from them too, when they vocalized that same sentiment. At least one person from that area didn't see, you know, much of an issue with that, with that warehouse area being shaved off. But, but again, you know, if, if there are other people, you know, of, of a different opinion on that, you know, from that area, you know, I have not heard from them. I, you know, to date, I've only heard from the one.
Yeah, so I, I'm obviously, I've been in contact. I know you reached out to my former opponents to talk about the map, but I have been in contact with Rosemont, and I have said what I said. It is not good policy to make a change like that when you can have someone come in and make a decision that will drastically impact a community, and they can't be held accountable by that community. And that is ultimately, while we are pushing and pulling and tugging over these lines, and while we want to keep neighborhoods together, and while we want major identifiable boundaries, because we work together. If there is an issue that borders mine and Michael's district, mine and Jared's district, mine and Carrie's district, mine and Carlos's district, we all work together. We're lucky in that respect. This council might not always be that way. And when you have cuts like that, you could have someone that, that has no regard. And then residents don't get to hold those folks accountable. It's why we defer to each other to represent our districts, because we assume that they know best. And so I'm not going to belabor that point, but we could go up, if you want, and talk about. And so I'm not going to belabor that point, but we could go up if you want and talk about university and what that does. And I think Michael, yeah, Michael said it best, yeah. And so I just, again, we're there on that. So that's, those are my issues with, with District Nine. And then can you go up to downtown, please? I'm fine there. Downtown is at least okay.
Yeah, the downtown area you and I had discussed before, and I know that, you know, I made an outreach to Mr. Peralta because of his position at the neighborhood. He's a leader there, you know, elected in there. And I believe also Councilman Chris, you know, also made an outreach to him to discuss some things, at least that's what he told me. And so I know that we've attempted, I think, you know, many of us to have those good discussions, you know, to try to, you know, reflect it. Now, I didn't approach you on that specific topic, Elizabeth, or register.
You didn't approach me at all, Carlos.
Well, I'm saying on that particular topic, I didn't approach you on that and I apologize. Okay?
Any other discussion on District Nine there? Okay. Yes, ma'am.
This is more to Fernando. You know, when we pay consultants to help us, I'm more accustomed to seeing them face to face. I think we need to try to at least extend the time that we're having with Bickerstaff so that they could engage with us. If not, are they in Austin?
Yes, ma'am. And they work most closely with our law department, but we, we advised them that it would probably be the best use of our resources for them to communicate with us remotely.
We're writing that check to them. And I think the next time we're going to have a discussion like this, I'd like the spontaneous interaction that can come from them being right here.
We can certainly arrange that, sure. Mr. Arnold has been more than happy to come. He came in person to one of our meetings and not knowing how much interaction we were going to have, we advised him to communicate with us remotely, but he's happy to come in person.
Get him here and tell him, don't put us on a two-hour time limit. Be prepared to stay because I think we need, we really need them at the table. This will keep happening.
There's no question. I will say they have been more than accommodating.
Okay.
Their service to this effort has been commendable.
Thank you.
I'm requesting a five-minute break so I can use the restroom. That'd be okay? Okay, we're going to reset, water break recess, okay. Okay, y'all ready? Calls back to order. This is an open discussion here. We could sit here and do this all day. I think despite Councilmember Flores' best efforts on this map, we lack quite a bit of consensus and we would need lots of changes to the map, Carlos. I'll let you jump in there if you disagree. But mostly around communities of interest seem to be the predominant concern among council members. Do you have any comments about that?
Well, you know, some of those changes are easier made than others, right? You know, the 30 boundary right there will, you know, cause some more work to be done on that map. You know, I can't, I don't have the luxury of working on it here right now. You know, that's going to take, you know, more required looking into, okay? But, you know, these changes that, you know, that I've been taking notes on and hearing, you know, are not insurmountable. You know, could they be done? Yes. What the imbalance of what D-11 would look like, you know, I can't tell you. I can't ascribe a number figure on it. You know, taking an educated guess, you know, it would reduce to some extent, you know, without running, you know, those specific numbers, I don't know. I can't, I can't say what.
So, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And when it comes to our other versions that have been presented to us for consideration, version three, which is Councilmember Nettles' version, counting voices, I know that Dr. Williams, Graham-Bretton Bivens, Councilmember Nettles, and Councilwoman Beck have expressed an interest in that map being their predominant primary map. I've heard from Leonard today that he's not against letting the community give some input, at least at this first public hearing, on maps. I won't speak for Michael because I'll let you, get to you in a second. Carrie, I think you were pretty clear today. You were okay with having multiple maps in an open session. Michael, you want to give your opinion on that or how you feel?
I'll say if I'm just speaking on behalf of a District Three person, both Two and Three achieve, I think, keeping community of interest together and either one.
Yeah, yeah. And any other time in my.
I'm not going to speak for the rest of the city, et cetera.
But that's in District Three, which is important. Any other time, I think a mayor is a swing vote is helpful. In this, it's not necessarily helpful because we have a split council on what the best process is. And right now, I could be the swing vote to say, let's proceed with version three and see how the community reacts to it. But I, I'm a little isolated from some of the direct commentary because I don't get the same, some of it I do as mayor, but I don't get all of it that you guys do. So what I think I would like to do, unless somebody else wants to be the fifth vote around this table to build consensus, is at the very least have version two and version three presented on Thursday of next week or this week. Hopefully, we have the hearing. And we may propose, right now, we don't have another map drawing session until the 22nd. We probably need to move that up and go through that exercise after Thursday. I will say this on the record, is I spent quite a bit of time with Hispanic leaders last week in a really candid conversation about their interest in a strong south-side Hispanic district. And their voices were very clear and concise about the history of the area and how important they think it is. And so that is a priority for me. I want that to be clear. How the lines get drawn, I'm still listening, but I just, I don't want that to get lost in this conversation and why I'm stating what I am right now because I think we've gotten pretty close. And I do think Chris's map comes pretty close to that. I really do. But I need a public hearing to get to, get to feel like I can swing a council one way or the other, to make 10 years of decision-making. That's just a big decision for me.
Can I just ask a question? I just want to ask a question. So for the, you're talking about having public comment on Thursday. Is this going to be a free-for-all where everybody can come with everything again? Or are there going to be defined parameters speaking against, for one map or the other map? I just want to make sure we set those parameters.
That's a good point, maybe making sure people that are speaking on the record reflect which map they're supportive of and/or any concerns that they have in the public comment piece. Go ahead, Fernando, will you say something? Sorry, I thought.
Just seeking clarification. I think you've stated plainly that your intent is to present version two and version three for public review and comment at Thursday's public hearing. We anticipate that a fair number of residents may appear to express support for map V4. And presumably, they'd be perfectly entitled to do so, even though the subject of the hearing is maps V2 and V3.
Yeah, map X for that matter, too.
It could be.
Yeah.
Kind of, kind of pursuing along those lines. Like you, Mayor, I've been the recipient of a lot of input, you know, from the collective Hispanic community. They have not varied to say map version three, you know, is not supported by them. You know, they, some have sent letters in. They were unequivocally clear. Their thought is, again, that the Hispanic district, the opportunity district that they were looking for in, in the south is not, you know, robust enough. It's not strong enough and, you know, you, you know the rest. You know, both you and I have heard this. To Fernando's point, can we expect probably a lot of input along those lines? Yes. So that's where we are, that's where we are.
Let me just add to this again, and I, that was a good point that you did make, Mayor. And I'm just going to be black and white and be honest. Yeah, I like the thing Gina said earlier. I am black, okay? For the record, Michael is saying things off the mic. Can anybody hear?
So your joke isn't hitting the same.
Yes. Version three has done its fairest share of crossing the aisle to make, get consensus as far as District Seven and District Three, even District Four in the way it was drawn. And so I wish we could get some consensus today because drawing, taking two maps to the public, it puts us around this table again and us saying the same thing over and over. And I'm going to say this and just really throw this out there, and this might be a laughing stock for everybody. But if we have a problem with Bob Willoughby coming up every week saying the same thing over and over and we keep doing this each week, then we are hypocrites. Say what I said. Now, I shared with Carlos another map. And the reason why I didn't change our map because I felt like when we left council the last time, we had agreed that we was not going to change any maps or not present any maps. But I continued to work on some. And I showed Carlos a different map that is a version nine of three. And it loops around 35 and picks up some of the south side to make the Hispanic district a little stronger. So where it sits today, and it picks up some more of the, of the south side and takes the percentage up to like 56%. We have that version. I just did not submit that version, so. But, and I spoke with Councilmember Flores, map three version truly supports getting a second Hispanic Latino elected. Also, there's lines that we can draw to fix far north to build a population for District Two. All these versions, I didn't make no changes because I feel like we're just going to choose a map that fits best, go to the community and make more changes as we go on one consistent map. So I'm not putting anybody out on pointed fingers, but outside of the mayor, I think there ought to be someone else that could give us a five or a six consensus on version three. I really think that we can do this today. And it's not to say that's going to be the end-all, be-all. Once we hear from constituents, we can still tweak those lines, but if we take two maps out there again. And, and I'm going to say this, and I probably shouldn't say this, but I'm going to say it. If we compare map three and map two, and Carrie will argue me on this, the percentage of getting a minority seat in a new district versus in four is higher. And I feel like that this council has done a great job under your leadership, Mayor, as being diverse. And some may say we have a majority on council, but several votes have come across that we didn't know how anybody was going to vote. And I think that we have a good council. And I think if we chose another map outside of three, it would be more of a conservative map and we will lose representation on the MMA. And for that, I'm encouraging someone to step out and be the leader and join map three version so that we can move to the next phase in this process.
Mayor, I just want to share something with you. And it's, it's rather sad, but I've been sitting at this table since 2013. And this is the first time I've seen this body not be able to reach consensus. And it gives the impression that we're just, just wavering in the wind, and I hate that. When we left here last week, I, among others, asked everyone, would they agree if there are more changes to at least have the courtesy of letting people know? I got a text from Carlos on Sunday, and of course, I was unavailable until later on. I'm not pointing fingers, but we should be able to exert leadership to say up or down. I can tell you, version three does create that additional Hispanic district, but I am always reminded of Carrie Moon when the census came out. Carrie would say, those two districts may not look like what the general public thinks. And that's what we're seeing. And so no matter how we avoid making a decision, we're going to have to make one one day. Now, I can promise you, when we put this out with more than one map, it's going to be, what's that movie, Groundhog Day all over again? Because, you know, we've given the public the impression that we can't come to consensus. And so that's why I support one map. The one map that I support does create that additional Hispanic district. I have yielded to the suggestions that I give up portions of my maps as, as it is right now, and I did that. So I would just hope that we can have some consideration to go out next week with a map that lets the public know we are showing leadership. I, I like the idea of being flexible, but I also know how this looks. So those are my comments.
Go ahead, Carrie.
I'm going to talk some. I would encourage my council members to grab page one and grab three, page three, and just kind of go back and forth and look at the small differences between map two and three. Y'all can do that while I'm talking since you're not going to be listening. What I will tell you is that if you're making the argument for Hispanic district, that second Hispanic district, map two is the strongest. That's straight from Bickerstaff. Map three has District Eleven as Hispanic or African-American opportunity. Every argument that was made to combat map four, when map four is at 56% Hispanic opportunity in District Eleven, map three is only 52%. And it's not an mm, it's, that's the data behind it. So map three, District Eleven, is Hispanic and African-American opportunity. District Two has the second Hispanic opportunity district in District Nine. Councilwoman Beck said, this affords the geographical population for our Hispanic community in the south to have their own district. If that's your argument, then map two is your map. There's very little difference between these two. There's other arguments to say, let's let, you know, people's voice be heard. Let's take those voices and if we need to make changes to one of the districts that are impacted between the district map two and map three, then let's do it. But I follow the mayor's lead in submitting two maps.
Carlos. And then Elizabeth, and I think Jared.
Right. I want to allude to something that Chris brought up. Yes, we touched on that, that map. I think it was called, nicknamed in some circles, Horseshoe. I, I know that there was, you know, state rep, you know, Romero proposed a concept, you know, contacted me, I think he contacted others. I did not have, you know, full opportunity to go embark on, on drawing a complete map there, but the concept was there and it did achieve higher numbers in, in D2 and D11, above 60%, I think we saw. But, you know, there, there may be, you know, different iterations of that. So that, that's not, that's not fully completed, it's not fully vetted. Try to take a stab at that. You know, you saw that, you know, Michelle, and we kind of stepped through it, but there was not enough quality time with it. And that's why I didn't bring it up because, you know, again, just, just kind of hearing where council is, you know, on, on just the maps we have, you know, the, the environment's not favorable, you know, to consider it. Does it have merits? I don't know. Maybe, possibly. You know, but again, that's, that opens up the discussion again, right? I'm all for having good discussions, no matter how hard. You know, this isn't an easy task, you know, for any of us. So be it. You know, that's why, as they say, they pay us the big bucks, right? These are our jobs. Part of it. Just deal with it and try to get through it in the best way possible. So.
Elizabeth?
Yeah, I'm not sure when, Carrie, I don't know what you meant and maybe you misspoke or you misunderstood me when I, I, I said that there are definitely, as Mayor and Carlos pointed out, folks that want the Hispanic Opportunity District in, in the south. I don't think that they said they wanted that to be District Nine. That being said, if it needed to be District Nine, by all means, make it District Nine. I am, I'm, I'm here to represent my constituency, whoever that is, and. and I wanna make it clear on the record that um- that I'm not looking to get rid of uh Hispanic population in District Nine as a way to- to save me, um, to the extent that I think has- are some of the Hispanic population that I have the honor of representing today. There's some neighborhoods that really mean a lot to me that I will lose in any of these maps to make that happen. And we have all fought at this table for hours and hours and hours, and we have pushed and we have pulled. And it says, "Are we gonna have this district on, you know, this type of district on the backs of our black community? Are we gonna have it on the backs of our business community? Is it gonna be on the backs on the North? Is it gonna be on the backs of the South?" And we have fought and we have struggled and we will never reach perfection. And I feel like I say this at every time we're at this table, that we are letting perfection get in the way of good. We aren't going to make everybody happy in this. We can't make everybody happy. It is an impossible task. We can get to as close as we can. Now, there might be some differing opinions on what is close to we ca- what close looks like and where we wanna be. I think Mayor Protim, you said it much better than I could have ever said it in that it looks like we're flapping in the wind. And I think we're all committed to doing what's best for the city. Carlos, I welcome you to- to- to come sit with us and- and have a conversation. Uh, that hasn't- that hasn't happened and we're here to work with you. And so the seat is there at the table. Please come and work with us so that we're not in a position where we're having to choose between two maps, three maps, four maps. I- I, let me finish, sorry. We are all committed to making this happen, what is best for Fort Worth. And I think what is best for Fort Worth is strong leadership. And I understand the mayor does not wanna be the swing vote in a vote like this. Um, I don't think you need to be. I think that we have worked really hard to address everyone's needs regardless of what side of the aisle they're on. And if we go to public comment, there's a lot of talk, Five Four, we know who they are, we know where they sit at the table, we've all read the articles, um, and let's just be very clear. There are, we're discussing two maps, taking them out. One by a more conservative block of council and one by a um more liberal or progressive or whatever term you wanna use, uh, side of the council. So we're gonna go out to public and we're gonna say, "Pick a side." And to date at this council, we have all been so proud that we have not done that. We have not done that. We have worked hard to not do that. And we are setting ourselves up to be in a situation where we do just that, where it is an us against them. If we have one map, one map that we base it on, then we come to, it forces us, it forces us to no longer say, "Well, what about yours? What about mine? What can so-and-so get there and this person get there?" We've got one map, we have to get together, we have to arm wrestle, we have to listen to the community, and we have to get that map out the door so that the people who are coming to either challenge us or run in these new districts know what's happening. The city of Fort Worth knows that we have a map and we can put this to bed and we can move forward and we can be proud. And so with that, I'm gonna make a motion that we take one map and one map only to uh public comment, and I think that should be map Three.
It's a motion. So I'll let anybody second if you wanna do that. Sure.
So I- I don't view it that way and respectfully, Gina, I don't view us, view this as flapping in the wind at all. I feel like there's uh deal fatigue, you know, from this table and probably from constituents. But um I think we gotta keep at it uh and have that endurance because that is leadership, right? When it gets a little harder, gets a little tougher, the easy way is to say, "Okay, let's- let's move on." So with some endurance, I think what at least I'm getting is more fine-tuned feedback, more specific feedback from constituents that uh are illuminating and valuable. So everyone senses we're getting closer to the- the finish line, I- I- and I think we are. Um, and so it's not right when we're getting to the- the end of the line, so to spoke- so to speak here, that I wanna silence anybody. You know, I wanna encourage more and more input. Um, because, listen, we started with three maps last week, today. Last week, we had how many? Four? Five? How many? Whatever, whatever it was. Two, or two, sorry. So we added one, so we're back to two. But um we're, I feel like we're getting closer and we just need to- to keep at it.
You- you look like you're engaging me, and only because of that I'll respond.
Okay.
And- and that's the only reason why I am reminded that the public was under the impression we would agree on one map. And so that's the predicate for- for my plea.
Right.
Because that's what we gave the public, the impression. And when we fail to deliver the impression, whether it's a- a law, a rule, what have you, that's why I say it looks like we're floundering because we gave one impression, so that- that's the reason. And I only engage you because your eyes were so pleading for me to respond.
Jared.
Um, I'm just, I'm gonna speak towards why I think we should move forward to one vote and I recognize there was a vote in seconds, so this is in the spirit of discussion. It wasn't a s- okay, no. So it's in the spirit of discussion. Um, I remember um at the beginning of this process, um, we presented a map um that looked a lot like the one that uh Councilmember Moon has presented. Um, there's no doubt, um, because the record shows why he didn't support something like this. Um, and the reason being, and the communities um came out to say, "This is the map that we adopted as a council and he voted no." Um, and also the task force voted no against the same concept. Reason being is because it was so far away from what they heard from communities of interest um was the spirit of what they felt and the residents of Fort Worth felt like it'd get us closest to honoring all or as many community of interest as possible. Um, to get specifically, um, District Four in version Two does not honor uh the way that um Parkland um and Heritage specifically um s- stated the boundaries that they want it to be. In seventeen oh nine, I didn't know what seventeen oh nine was when I drew the first iteration of this map um long, long time ago, um, but now I do. Um, and the southern boundary was supposed to be eight-twenty and thirty-five. Um, and the re- and after learning about um those na- communities of interest, what I realized is Kerry was right. Um, there's a- there's a big difference between Parkland and Woodhaven, and yet they're still in the same district. Um, moving over to District Nine, I know what Bickerstaff said and I also know what election data has said for the past decade or more. And District Nine drawn as is, we know is not a o- opportunity for Latino um i- in- in the way that uh Councilmember Moon is describing. And so as we were discussing-
What chart? Interrupt you, but wa- wasn't he quoting what Bickerstaff information?
Yeah, but we have a le-
So- so we, do we need to then um decide whether we think that information is accurate or not?
So let me-
And if we're disregarding it or not?
Please, cuz-
I don't know if they're-
Well, let me finish the train of thought.
Yeah.
Let me finish the train of thought. What I'm saying is, even if it is an opportunity, when you're comparing the two maps, it still limits another opportunity because we don't have a district that's coming down the East Side that's another Latino opportunity district. So in fact, if Nine drawn as it is with minor modifications from the Nine in version Three, we're still short one Latino opportunity district, if that's the case. And so what I'm- what I'm saying is, we have election data to know that if we're solely relying on D Nine as the second Latino opportunity district, we've in fact underrepresented Latinos in this community by the way we drew version Two. Um, that- that being said-
Can we add, Carlos, do you have an- an opinion there?
Just- just this- Wait, I'd like to have an opinion on the district that I represent.
Just a second, just a second.
Ju- just a minute, Elizabeth. I mean, I'm just gonna answer Leonard's question. I would add to that by saying, not just V Two, but V Three, by the same token and argument.
Elizabeth.
Leonard, I think what uh Councilman Williams was alluding to is, Bickerstaff has said that yes, it is a potential opportunity district. It has said that a lot of districts that we have- have uh drawn are potential opportunity districts. They're looking at numbers, they're looking at demographic data. Um, you saw Chris go through, uh, I think it was on Councilman Flores's map, District Eleven, and how his concern was is that it, while the numbers were there on paper as far as demographics, when you start looking at ratios, which Bickerstaff did say ratios are very important, uh, his concern was that what would end up happening is that a wealthier white person from the very southern portion of the district would- would- would win. Again, we cannot control outcomes. But when it comes to District Nine, and the reason why South Side Latino community members, you have heard from them, is because for so long, we have touted District Nine as a Latino opportunity district, a minority opportunity district. They have never elected a um a Latino from that district, never. And they put up candidates and um what we know is that with the percentages as they are today in District Nine, and I cannot speak for how that would play out in other parts of the city, but I can tell you with the neighborhoods in District Nine and the current percentages as they are today, which were fifty-two percent, it was not a Latino opportunity district. And so um I think under Councilman Moon's map, it's actually a lower uh Hispanic population. And so to me, as someone, I- I live in the district, I represent it. And so um when it starts dropping down, I think, what, correct me if I'm wrong-
And I'm gonna come back and-
Yeah, I put words in your mouth, but that's, his- history shows otherwise. History has shown us that in other parts of the- of the city, we can elect a minority, but um in that particular, in- in District Nine, that has- that has not come to fruition yet. Now, I welcome, I welcome a challenge.
So now, the- the reason, and so I'm, I was going somewhere with that. And the reason I brought that up is, if you move over to version Three, um, first, I wanna say, we worked last week really hard on version Three as a council and got it to a place where no one said that it wouldn't work for them. We went around the table and asked, um, "Is this consensus?" And a lot of people said yes. Everyone said yes. Carlos said, "I needed more time." And what I would say is that all around this map, you see that communities of interest from what we've heard from the public have been honored almost to the T. Now, the one question that we've been having is, what- what do we, what do we, what do we do about the Latino opportunity district? And I believe that in version Three, um, that's the strongest district that actually will have the likelihood of presenting uh an opportunity for Latinos because um of the demographics and where they are. When you look at citizen voting age population um in District Eleven in this map, it's at thirty-six, thirty-eight percent, which is ten, over ten percent more um than any of the other groups. And twen- ten percent more than black and then twenty percent more than um our white neighbors. Um, and when you think about that in terms of, now that it's apples to apples using CVAP data, there's only one black district that does that in the entire map, and that's District Five. Not one other black district does that when you have apples to apples data. And so it is a strong Latino opportunity district um w- when you look at CVAP. The other thing I wanna say is, if for some reason it's not, right? And if the Rosemont and Worth Heights, um, if Carlos would argue that they need to be in that map, the horseshoe could potentially make that work without making any impact on any of the lines. And I know that because I saw the same map that he saw, um, and all the checks checked. And so if we were to present it today, it would have checked out, but we didn't. And we didn't because sixty-three percent wasn't high enough on both of those districts.
No, I mean, to clarify, Jared, agree with what you said, you know, uh, you know, regards to- to the horseshoe. It was a timing issue, okay? I hadn't, because of the timing issue, I had Michelle run through some traps on- on this so-called horseshoe map. But, you know, I- I spoke with Fernando and there was no time, you know, to even have a Bickerstaff review on it. So-
Well, let me jump in. Um, so what you saw was a different map from what, it was same concept, but it was different from what we actually had. Cuz there was actually amendments that we actually made to version Three that we did not submit. And I just kinda, before we vote, cuz I think we're getting ready to vote, um, I just wanna just do apples to apples and just go through these uh version Two and version Three. As um Kerry said, if you look at the map, if you look at map Eight in version Two and are s- are very similar, other than in map Two, it takes out, we know, more on the side and South Side. But the lines from thirty-five all the way to Burleson are pretty much the same. The lines from thirty-five to West of Fort Worth are pretty much the same. Look at District Six, same. District Three, same. District Seven, same, other than Highway eighty-one. Um, Two go, it's a little bit further, but pretty much the same. District Ten at the top of the new district, whatever you wanna call it, Ten Eleven, is pretty much the same. District Four, uh, and that little piece there, uh, is pretty much the same. The difference between version Two and version Three is the new district, and it's pretty much in the same area. Other than district in version Two, it goes up into Parkland a little bit more versus uh version Three stops at eight-twenty. Uh, version Two, uh, new district stops around Lancaster, I look, where this version Three goes to uh twenty. So the difference between these two maps is really how that new district is drawn in that portal. And so if we look at the numbers for those two districts, District Ten in version number two-four, it says the Hispanic VPA is thirty-four point eight percent. The African-American VPA is eighteen point one percent. And the white VPA is thirty-seven point seven percent. If we look in the new district, uh, the same area, and we look at it over here in Eleven, it actually makes it an SMA, S-MMA, and Hispanics um is fifty-two point seven percent. Black, African-American is twenty-three point six percent. And the white population is eighteen point three. The last point I would make is, um, the last point I'm gonna make is that District Three actually supports and gives another MMA possibility. But also, if we made amendments to this, version Three, I'm sorry, if we made amendments to this, what did I say? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, version Three. Uh, if we made amendments to go down the South Side, um, it can happen in this map. And so again, I think the real argument is, are we going to elect um one Anglo in Far North Worth, Far North Fort Worth, and one brown, black representative in- in South Fort Worth? Or are we gonna elect two Anglos? That's- that's my perception of looking at this map. And so I just think that we- we go to the vote and see what happens. But I think those are the- the differences. Because in all these other maps, it'd really accomplish everything that everybody wanted other than the Latino opportunity.
And to be clear, we're voting on whether or not we take one map out. We are not voting on the final map. But I think we will sit here and do this dichotomy until all of my hair is gray. And yes, and so we, we need to force ourselves to do the hard work. We're not doing that right now. We're taking the easy way out and, come on, guys.
Go ahead, Kerry.
We keep going over percentages. I just wanna clarify that map Two has more designations. They- they both have five, but map Two has more designations for the Hispanic Strong and Hispanic Opportunity. And in the argument you just made, Chris, for map Three, having six MMAs is the same thing can be accomplished with map Two. We're- we're spinning our wheels. Um, you are correct in pointing out, it's very minimal difference. It's a portion of East Side of Thirty-five, South of Thirty, Meadow Brook area. Um, um, South Two Eighty-seven, near eight-twenty, you know, area that is mostly impacted by this. But um, so I'll just summarize with that point. And I will ask from a point of order, so if Chris's motion fails, we make a motion and fails, then what is the direction?
At that point, you're, you've got all three of these maps that we're gonna discuss in a public hearing on Thursday.
Okay.
Um, let me say a few things. So as of right now, me personally in my office, I've gotten no support for version Three from the Hispanic community. And we've spent a lot of time talking about this map. lot of time talking about this map, and that may be a need for education about what this dialogue has been, but it's really easy for us to feel like we've put all the hard work in, when I personally only sat through one public hearing on redistricting. Our redistricting task force has taken up the milk of that responsibility. I sat through relatively short, one and a half hours, half calls, half in person, and I'm willing to keep listening. That's how I feel about it. At the end of the day, I've already made very clearly, this is not a conservative versus liberal. I have said on the record, I want Hispanic, Hispanic Opportunity District, and I think it needs to be in South Fort Worth. But right now, every single Hispanic person I have talked to, both phone calls and emails, has not supported V Three right now. They've been talking through Carlos and V Four. Despite the fact that we have all articulated our concerns, everyone's had a concern with that map. So I just need that on the record. Um, and then the second piece is, none of us around this table have done redistricting before. This is hard work. And you can ask any of our colleagues in Austin how terrible the process was for them. And while I appreciate that we are tired and we want it to look pretty, I still think that in the next few weeks, we're gonna felt, build more consensus. And it's not lost on me that, as frustrated as people may have been with Carlos today, he is attempting to channel a lot of people that are in his ear on this map, and where we get. And, and he takes those phone calls, and he is trying his very hardest to get us there. And then the last thing I'll say is, there's a lot of we-talk that hasn't always been felt. All of you have come to me separately, frustrated at different times about who's having separate meetings, and who's behind closed doors meeting with who. Everyone. So at this point, I'm not willing to separate maps and pick one, because I don't feel like I have consensus yet from the whole community, and that's my job as mayor, is to represent the entire community. And I know that may be frustrating, but I'm just not there yet. However, you have a motion and a second on the floor. I would say, see where it falls as a vote. Raise your hand around the table if you're in favor of Chris's motion, which will be to support Version Three. It was Elizabeth's motion, excuse me. Who seconded it?
It was to have one map.
One map? Okay, so are you, are you, is your motion on the floor to propose one map in particular?
No, it was just a movement.
So.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna make one comment for you. Um, I respect what you said, too. I respect, across the board, we've all talked, et cetera. I respect what you talked about, you're getting more information. I respect the confusion that we may give by sending two maps out. For me, this is not a political issue. Uh, I can't say that everybody around the table haven't played politics, but for me, it's not, it's not conservative versus liberal. It's not. It's about what's, what's best. And you hear both sort of sides, you hear this other side talking too, about creating another Minority Opportunity District. This is not, even whatever we do today, whatever we do on Thursday, is not the final map.
Right.
March twenty-ninth will be the day that we vote on a final map. So we're still gonna hear from people. We're still gonna get all those emails that we're getting, no matter if we go with this map, or this map, or whatever map. So, I just wanted to put that on the record as part of it, too. I say that a lot, but I guess as part of it. Um, I'm okay with still continuing to listen, because again, today, even if we put one out there, it's not the final map. So, I get that there will be confusion. I think people are gonna be confused already. I get that people are starting to wake up a little bit to this, and be starting to get calls. Um, so I'm okay in respecting you, too, with moving forward, with putting this out to the public, cause I still think we're gonna hear about Version Four, as Fernando brought up.
We are, yeah.
And therein lies the question, is what do we do? If we take three maps out, what do we do? Or if, does someone make a comment, well, I'd like to change this line, and Carrie, hell, we can't keep the, the numbers straight ourselves, right? Do they want this number? Do they want that number? Do they want this line changed? Do they want that line changed? And at the end of the day, you have heard from Hispanic communities, Carlos is, is channeling, what? We don't know. We don't know. And so, wait, I'm not done. I'm not done, Carlos. I'm not done. We, we don't know. And I welcome a very honest and open conversation that we have all sat around this table and asked, and asked, and asked, and asked, and it feels like the ball keeps getting moved, and we keep getting to this percentage number, or doing this, and the next thing you know, well, it's no, we don't, this isn't what I, I need, this is what I need. And at the end of the day, we'll do this a thousand times over to get it right, but we've gotta have everyone at the table. Going out with three maps puts us right back here. It puts us right back here. And what do we tell our residents? Do you want Map A, B, or C? And while I respect where you've heard from, Mayor, we've all heard from our own people, right? We all represent different portions of the community, and I don't mean demographically, I mean geographically. We all represent different interests. And at the end of the day, we're gonna hear, and we're gonna take that into our individual votes. You will trust your North Star, we will all trust our North Stars. But we were elected, as Carrie likes to, to often remind us, we were elected. We were elected to make these decisions. We were elected, and it's time that we make a decision, and, and we don't have to, we can take two maps out, we can take three maps out, but what is that process? Because we're just gonna have three maps up, and it's gonna be a straw poll, and whoever goes first, what, whatever it is, people need to be clear on what we're doing, and this is getting ridiculous.
Carlos, will you say something?
Just merely, you know, who I've been talking with, whoever asks, you know, I, I have told. I've told you, Jared, I've told you, Chris, Carrie, Leonard, you, Elizabeth as well. You know, I, I'm not trying to, you know, hide anything, for lack of a better word. And I know that there have been some, you know, comments made that I guess, you know, ultimately probably allude to me. That's not the case, okay? And we can talk about that individually. For me, that's secondary, all right? This is not personal. I'm here to do a job, and you know, that's it. I'm gonna do it the best way I can, and fine. Uh, but to, to, to answer your question, yeah, Hispanic community at large, from all places, all over the city, seems to call me almost all at once, at times, and that's fine. I just try to make myself successful. In addition to that, have I heard from, uh, say, for example, and Mayor, you know this, the Northwest Alliance leadership came, you know, and spoke to the mayor, spoke to me about redistricting. So I hear from them. I've heard from the Riverside Alliance. I've heard from Oakhurst. I hear from individuals all around the city, not just Hispanic community, okay? So just putting that out on record for clarity, in case anyone has any doubt.
Jared.
Um, I'm gonna offer this up for everybody, cause I, I think we're in a really important and good spot. Um, I think the beauty of going forward with one map, whichever the map is, is that it allows for residents who have not spent as much time on this map, some have, um, and it also allows for, um, our entire city to talk about the same thing, and to make comments about what they like and don't like about the same thing. And if we move forward with one map, we are talking the same language and know which changes to make, because we have one map. It's a lot easier to tweak or amend fully one map than it is to try to parse out what community said about three maps, and then still have to come back to one map, put out clear direction on whether or not they like that one map. So this allows us to put one map forward to the residents, let them pick it apart and rip it apart, so we can come back on one map and make amendments to lines with community input. If we don't do that, and we go forward two or three maps, we're at best gonna be speculating at the end of this road as to where the lines need to be. So I'd rather us move one map forward, so residents can make the amendments that they want to that map, just like we can make amendments to that map.
Gina.
I'm, I'm going to a bird dog off of the PhD nerdy guy next to me. I, uh, whether we do one map or several maps, as the mayor is, is intimated, you know, what if we were to call it Map FWCH for Fort Worth City Hall? People wouldn't know which one it was. We need them to build from something. But in the event we end up with more than one map, I'm hoping Fernando is listening to this debate, so you can help us create a framework on what we do, pass the map or maps presentation. I don't trust us to do that, and you make all the big money to, to be able to come up with a framework. I'm not asking you now, but I just know that if it goes toward multiple maps, we're gonna need some help to keep, you know, these, this, this basket of puppies in a basket, so that we'll, at least, we need to agree on something, whether it's process or what have you. And so, I would just give you that, that heads up, Fernando.
And I'm gonna throw something out here, okay? And I don't mean to pull a pin and throw a grenade in this mix, okay? This is just for discussion, so everybody settle down. The head's on, please. I want to get through this, too, but we're at somewhat of an impasse. Maybe something to consider, and again, putting this out for conversational purposes. You know, Chris mentioned this horseshoe map that, you know, some have, you know, chopped around with a few of us. You did, too, Jared, you know, as well as me. You know, I've already submitted a prototype of that, but it couldn't make bigger staff review. If this council decides to go with more than one map, that might be the tiebreaker that we're looking for. Just something to consider. I'm putting it out there. Discuss this, please.
Jared.
Thank you, Mayor. Carlos, um, while I, I respect, um, you know, your perspective to that, I think we can accomplish that with one map, if we, for instance, heard from South Side saying that they want to be a part of a Latino Opportunity District. I think what I said before still remains true. If we have one map, those comments can lead us down the path of drawing exactly what we heard. I mean, I'm committed to drawing that however it looks. I'm sure there's other people disabled that are committed to that, but I don't, I, I do not support sending multiple maps out there and confusing residents who are, have been involved in the process, and also who are gonna be involved in the process, because it's at the tail end of it. I mean, as Mayor Protem said, um, so eloquently, um, we all agreed last week, today, that we were gonna get back down to one map. Um, and I think that's, that, that means something to me, and I came, um, with an open heart and mind. Gina said she prayed this morning, and I did, too. Um, and I have, I still have faith that we can get there, um, but I think we have to send one map and honor our word, um, and let the residents make the amendments that they wish to make to this one map.
Uh, yes, thank you, Jared. I agree to that. Um, and to the point, I don't think we need to send another, uh, prepare another map. Um, Map Three can add that horseshoe. Map Two can add that horseshoe. And so, you can amend both of the, make amendments to both of those maps to include that horseshoe, get that Latino district. But to pull out another map, I mean, my goodness. Uh, I, I, I don't agree with, I think we, we, we vote down a map today, or, no, I'm not gonna agree with it. We vote down a map, and then we go to, to, uh, the community and hear what they say, and they want the horseshoe, we add the horseshoe. Because if the real argument is about the Hispanics, then why are we not able to pick one of these maps and do the horseshoe, if that's, if that's the only caveat to it? But there is no way in Fort Worth I can support Map X. So we talked about that, how it just rips up District Eight, so. You know, and basically, it takes, it takes, um, if you use your imagination, it just takes, uh, where, where District Ten and District Eleven, uh, connects off of Thirty-five and Thirty, it goes down, uh, to the southern part, on the, uh, west side of Thirty-five. It, 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 yeah, it does.
It pulls Como. Yeah, I mean, in all honesty, it, it does the same thing that we did with Como, in that we understand, and I think this is, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but if I've said a thousand times today, I am frustrated, and I am, I am frustrated because we've not had this voice at the table, and we can get there, we can draw a, a map with the, with the VAP that is needed. But one thing that has happened here is that we've all sat, and we've all listened to what, what the districts need. And I don't mean us personally, what our districts need, but then we get presented a map that doesn't address any of that. It addresses the Hispanic population, which is important. It's one of our five top priority, priority, five, one of five. But it doesn't get anywhere else that we need to go. It, it just doesn't. And so, we pick a map, and then we decide what that VAP is, and we start doing what we need to do to get there. But that takes negotiation, and it is, if, if we're doing this, it's, it's take all or nothing, people are gonna suffer. Representation is gonna suffer if we, if we take that route, and I just want everyone to be aware of, of that, um, on the horizon.
Carrie, did you have something?
I'm, I'm okay voting one map. I'm okay, you know, pushing forward Version Two and Three. I just briefly, not briefly, but after spending thirty minutes listening to everybody, here's the difference. There's two neighborhoods that are impacted, um, between the two maps, basically, that we're talking about. Um, you know, so we can, we can accomplish, accomplish how these neighborhoods are impacted. And, and we know that from experience from doing this, that when we go and talk and, and listen to the public input, we're gonna come up with some good, I call it employee solutions in business, but some good neighborhood solutions in government. Um, we're gonna do our Listening Town Hall, like Jared does, and, and learn that Como Listening Circle, learn that, you know, maybe Como might have a point, there might be a way we can, we can do that. And Carlos, I can help you show you how to do it. I'm the one that figured out how to connect Como to, along Chisholm Trail Parkway.
And are you the fifth vote on voting for, uh, one map?
I, I'm not counting votes. I'm just.
I mean, but we all are. I mean, I'm asking.
I'd be, I'm just saying, this is, I, I would be. I'm okay doing that if that's where the consensus is, but we're talking about two neighborhoods here that, that are really impacted by this.
I have a question for Carlos. It seems like, Carlos, when, when you mentioned the horseshoe, I'm not familiar with that, but do you think if we could present a map that incorporates the horseshoe, would that help us get to some form of consensus?
Well, that's what.
And keeping.
It's, it's possible, Gina. I mean, the horseshoe is the most, uh, prominent feature. You know, it's really the kind of the best way to describe how you slob over, you know, and connect districts.
See, I, I think we've gotten stuck with the names of maps, as opposed to what the maps do. And if, if there's a way to satisfy your audience who, who you're hearing from, if the horseshoe is that, would that help you get to one map?
I, I think it bears looking into. That's just my personal opinion. Yes.
I think it's a potential solution, and the purpose of that is to say, we did it for Como. We're willing to do it for the Second Hispanic Opportunity District, but I'm, I'm not, and as a negotiation tool, you should never, um, you should never negotiate against yourself. And, and, and I have warned everyone at this council of negotiating against yourself, right? If you tell me it's not good enough, but you don't give me a solution, I can't help you get there, Carlos. I can't help anyone get there. And so, we have some tools in our toolkit. We were willing to do that with Como, and the reason that we were able to do that, and we reached that solution, was because we all sat down at the table and talked about it, right? But we came up with solutions. Michael said, absolutely not, you know, your residents freaked out about the particular way we were gonna do that, and we came to a consensus. But we will never reach that consensus if the voice is not in the room.
And, and for me, you know, I'm, I'm not an attorney. You, you're probably much more experienced at negotiation, um, you know, than I am, but just, just as a layperson, I am trying to, uh, to find a way forward, and I am willing to concede things and keep an open mind, Elizabeth. I'm not trying to strengthen my position or weaken it. I'm just trying to find a path forward. That's all.
Go for it. The motion is, do we make a, the question begs, do you want me to make
a motion on one map, and then we start arm wrestling which map it is? Or do you want me to just go ahead and make the motion, one map and which map?
That's probably this quicker thing, is the sec, yeah, the latter.
So I'm gonna make a motion that we, we just clarify.
Hand's giving up.
Yeah, so, so the, the motion that, that I wanna, um, put out is that we have one map that we take next Thursday to our public meeting. It is not the, no commentary, one map. We vote one map out today. I think Map Three gets us closer. That's the map we're, we're calling. No, we just said, one map, one map.
What are you proposing? Sorry, Elizabeth.
Sorry.
For a map.
For the process.
No, what I said was, do you want me to make a motion to, that we have one map, and then we arm wrestle over which map that is? And the mayor said that it would be quicker if I made the motion for one map, and then which motion it is. You're more than welcome to make an alternate motion. That's how we can do this.
Or just vote no.
You can do whatever you want, Carrie.
I was trying to, trying to figure out a way I could vote with you.
Well, just, I, but, but if we do the first vote first, yeah, if, if we.
You're saying you're willing to get to one map.
As long as it's yours. Yes, 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 yeah.
Okay, I motioned that we, uh, choose one map.
And that map be Version Three.
No.
No.
Just do two maps.
It ain't but thirty seconds.
Okay, fine.
It's thirty seconds.
Motion that we, with it, we have. Motion that we, that we have one map, that we take one map to the public on Thursday.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor of one map? Mayor, I'm doing your job. I'm sorry. I'll let you do it. All those in favor of one map, raise your hand. We are determining if we're going to take one map out. Okay.
Okay, so not one map. Looks like we're going to be with three maps, right? Motion failed, or two maps.
Well, then which two maps?
Make a motion with two maps.
Make a motion for two maps.
What I would, I'm, I'm going to make a motion to move forward, uh, on Thursday with maps two and three and let the public make comments on those maps.
Can I get a second on Michael's motion?
Okay, I'll make his.
Carlos was the second. Okay, go ahead.
No, I didn't want a second. I, I did.
Do we have a second on the motion really quickly? You have a second? Thank you. Now, discussion. Go ahead, Carlos.
Okay. I'm thinking about, okay.
Just raise your hand.
You're good. You're good.
Have a substitute motion, there's one I'm trying to.
Okay, so, okay, so we've got a motion and a second. And now it sounds like we've got a substitute motion. What's your substitute motion, Carlos?
Going to put this out there in, in the spirit of trying to get to one map, okay?
Okay.
Uh, motion to support B, support three with the amendments to incorporate the horseshoe feature.
Let's, I'm sorry. I, I didn't want to speak for, okay, well.
Well, the motion is to do what? Be very clear.
Okay, all right.
Oh, my God.
All right, let me, I know. All right, my motion was, again, to. Are you pointing to Michael? Yeah.
That was a motion for two maps. He's, he's, he's offered a.
So would you consider amending your motion for the maps to include the horseshoe version?
I'll accept your friendly amendment.
Okay, I, I can support that, okay? If, if you're going to do it, okay, you're saying if you're going to do it for one, you do it for both. If, if that's the direction we're going, that's fine with me too. I mean, okay?
So to be clear, we have, we have an alternative motion, substitute motion, that would be to do the horseshoe version on both versions two and versions three. Okay. That's the motion. But I've got a motion and a second, but I need, now discussion. So Jared's got discussion.
I have a, a point of order. Can I make an alternative motion? Do we have to vote on this?
You, well, you can, okay, so we've got two motions on the floor. You've got the original two and three. You've got the one with the two and three with the horseshoe. You could make another substitute motion, but then you have to vote in reverse order.
Right, I'd like to make a substitute motion on that. I'd like to move forward version three, um, with the horseshoe as an amendment. Um, and also ensure that Wedgewood remains in one district. Wedgewood Square and Wedgewood East, excuse me.
Okay, we got.
But that can be done on both maps.
That's why, but I want, I, I wanted to make that substitute motion because I don't think it's fair to go to our residents with two maps that we even haven't seen. So I think it's important that if we're going to go down this road of a horseshoe, we send one map to do that before we send the residents. Because we're not going to come back into a map drawing discussion.
The one map motion just failed.
Right, so I still can make a substitute motion as a council member. The substitute motion was that we take version three with the horseshoe. If you want to make a substitute to do one map, where I can.
I, I think we can because we do have all the rules.
So is there, is there a, is there a second to Jared's substitute motion?
Let me clarify.
Gina has a second. So now Jared's motion's on the floor, which would be just to have a horseshoe version of version three and one map out to the, out to the community, correct? Okay, so now we need to vote on that motion. So all, she, yeah, she, yeah, got a second. Gina's our second. All in favor say aye. Okay, motion fails. Now we go back to substitute motion on the floor that Carlos had, correct? Which would be to do version two and version three with a horseshoe for, in both features, for the community to consider.
Can I do a friendly amendment to that?
Sure.
Um, I think it's important that we bring it back to this body before we send it to the community.
Okay, so is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion.
Okay, can I get a second for that motion? Is there a second to Jared's motion, which would be to come back together again before we do a redistricting hearing? Okay, Gina's our second. Thank you, Gina. Discussion, council, go ahead. Of course.
Discussion. I just cannot believe I'm sitting at this table talking about kicking it down a week again. I am disappointed in all of us, myself included, all of us. We should be disappointed in ourselves. Hard stop.
Is this the horseshoe map?
No.
This is, this is the version of horseshoe that I got from Councilmember Flores.
We won't go down that path. I'm just curious what was up there. Okay, go ahead, Elizabeth.
I think, I think Jared has a really good point about taking it out to the community as one map. If we have to do this again in four days, five days, whatever it is, I, I, I don't think we're going to rent. I said it last week. I'm going to say it again. I'm negotiating against myself. We're not going to reach consensus again if we continue to do this. But if it's worth the discussion, then we should do it. But I'm going to say again, because I said it last week, are we all going to agree that we're going to come out of this and are we going to get another fourth and fifth map? So that's really the question. If, and, and to be honest, there's not a lot of trust in word because that didn't happen last time. When we elected to kick it down the week, a week, um, to have an honest discussion, that honest discussion did, did not happen, right? We were provided with a whole new map and then a whole new version of another map. And, and, and so I am reluctant to kick it down for that reason. However, I think, take the two map, if you want to do two maps out with the horseshoe, fine, it's lucky, double the luck. But it is not going to be productive. I think we need to have one solid map that goes out to the community, that we take, that we take to the community. You're not listening, Carrie. If we have to come back and do this again, but, but I want something procedural. If we have to go back in there and have a, a motion, amend the resolution, that we're coming out of this with one. That we're not doing this again because this is crazy. So it. And, and so my question really is to you, Carlos. Are you committed to coming back to one map? Or are we going to kick this a week for honest discussion and then be back right here where we are? Because that's what happened. And you, you too, Carrie.
No one's wrong on maps than me, but there's, there's a motion on the floor. We've had two motions fail.
And I can, and I can.
How many are we going to add just to?
Until we get to where we want. We're changing the rules like you are. It's good.
I'm not changing any rules, Elizabeth. I'm not, I have not changed any rules.
Yeah, we, we have been on the one map train. And now when it's not looking like maybe you're going to get what you want, now we want two maps. Well, we don't know.
You're the one not getting what you want and.
I want one map.
And speaking towards this, okay.
I want one map for our community.
And so this governing body needs to be able to function.
To go back out and get public comment on two maps. And I think what Jared was trying to say is that if we have another drawing session where we entertain this new idea, then maybe we can. But honestly, I feel like this council's being held hostage and.
Strictly speaking from a feature standpoint, maybe, maybe this will kind of, uh, diffuse the situation with a little clarity. You know, Chris, you and I talked briefly about that horseshoe map, right? There are features of it that, you know, you know, in theory can be incorporated. You know, you set it yourself into your map, possible to incorporate into another. So don't think it will be a, a, a real big departure, you know, from the parent map, right? I mean, that's, that's, you know, my understanding, that's what I'm hearing. Understand your concern, Jared, that you don't want to go in there and say, hey, here's an entirely different, you know, thing, you know, for you to consider public. I, I, I get all that. But if this horseshoe feature enables us to connect, you know, these, these districts, preserving these community of interest, you know, in such a fashion that we can get behind it, then that's a, again, a feature to be incorporated into a parent map. And maybe, maybe the impact of a change is not as drastic as what we think.
That's why I'm saying we need more time to draw that if we're going to do that, which is why I'm saying we delay.
So your proposal, maybe more clear, is to have another map drawing session before a public hearing?
I don't think we should take, send two maps that none of us have consensus on for the sake of the horseshoe and we haven't even discussed it as a body. It's up there right now. I don't know.
So that, that's not, that's not my amendment of the horseshoe. So that, yeah.
That's just for illustrative purposes. I don't think any of us have gone through the process, uh, drilling down and looking at that. I think it's just therefore, this is what we could do. So I don't want anyone to look at that and say, because I have major issues with that map.
Mayor, I'd also be willing to stay to however long we need to stay here today, that even if we took a recess and went to go draw and came back to vote on one map that we can send out, even if it's not perfect. But I, I do not support sending two maps that we, none of us have talked about to the public. I, I, I don't think that's, um, that's not a good use of our time. It's not a good use of the public's time. And frankly, it's, it's misleading for us as a body to send some out to the public that we haven't seen or talked about under the premise of we agreed on sending it out.
I'm going to stand on one map. And my, my caveat to, it's talking about the horseshoe was, is that those amendments can be made after hearing public comit- commentary. And hearing from the Hispanic or any other community. It's not to say we go ahead and do the horseshoe right now and then send that map. No, we take the map to the community, then hear what the, uh, the argument is. That, that was what my initial moment, uh, comment was. I'm only going to support one map. I'm not supporting sending two, so that's where I stand. So y'all keep on making all y'all substitute motions.
You know, I just want to add, it's.
Go ahead, Leonard.
It's hard to keep track here, but, um, you know, what I think is probably unsettling is there's people listening, like myself, listening to this, that have no idea what the horseshoe is and what the hell we're talking about. And that, to me, if there's anything to be embarrassed about, this like at the, at the ninth inning here, introduce a concept to try to bring forward that, you know, I couldn't vote on because I don't know what we're talking about.
Right.
And how many other people don't know what this horseshoe concept is? It makes us appear, um, very capricious and just kind of making it up as you go. So I have a problem with that. To me, a couple of maps is fairly on, i- i- is not controversial. It's consistent with soliciting input, consistent with transparency. And I can support that with the modifications. If we all are educated as to what those are, fine. But, uh, that part of, of it, it's in for a penny, in for a pound with transparency and that process. So I have no problem with it. You, you know, otherwise you're saying you're putting a stop to communication and opinion and that, that is always a loser.
Thanks, Leonard. Okay, so go ahead, Michael. I think procedurally, we still have a motion on the floor from Jared, which was to, which was to. Repeat. Oh, no. Repeat your motion, please, Jared. Thank you for the record.
Oh, Lord, Leah, can you help me with this because I saw you write it down?
Well, I think you're, so the sub, the motion was the two and three with horseshoe and you made the friendly amendment. I believe it was to wait and be able to draw and so we could see it and then bring it back. Is that right?
So basically, the idea of the amendment was that we would bring those two concepts back to this body.
Before.
Before sending however many we send out to the public, but we would decide at that meeting. I just don't want to send this concept out and we haven't seen it or discussed it. And the community get the perception that these are things that we've talked about that we haven't.
Yep.
I'm okay with that. I mean, if, if there's time, I mean, I think we have time.
You already seconded it because you were seconding everything.
There's plenty of time to adopt the map. If you proceed with the substitute motion as amended to present two maps with horseshoe amendments to both of those maps, then you would need to have another map drawing session, uh, in advance of your next public hearing, which would mean you would be canceling Thursday's public hearing or rescheduling it.
Yeah. Which I'll just throw out, may happen anyway because the weather's coming, so winter is coming.
I, I want to make a, uh, which I'm not going to vote for, but I want to make a substitute motion.
You're not going to vote for your own motion?
Nope.
Okay.
Listen to the substitute motion.
Okay.
You got a second, Leonard? Is that we send version two map and version three map to public comments with no amendments made, hear from the community of what the amendment should be, then come back to drawing and make those amendments if necessary. That's my motion.
I will, I'll withdraw my motion if that's his motion. The original one I made sixteen motions ago.
Okay, so do we have a second for Chris's motion? Gina, that Gina likes to second. But, yeah, so the motion on the floor is to go forward Thursday, our first public hearing with two, version two and version three, hear from the community. Don't make any amendments after hearing from the community. Then after that public hearing, come back together for a map drawing session as a body before we would proceed any further for amendments. Do I encapsulate that correctly? Okay, I've got a motion on the floor and a second from Councilmember Bibbins. All in favor say aye.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, discussion, go ahead.
Well, so I guess we're, I'm stuck on this process. I want to make sure I understand the motion. When we come back and draw the maps, will it go back out to public hearing for that one?
That's for us to decide, I guess, at that point. Yes, is to do another public hearing.
Uh, because that's important for me in how I vote on this.
The reason why that motion is like that, yeah.
I agree with you, Jared. I think that would be important to me too. If we go back and draw again after this first public hearing, do at least one more public hearing before this body were to vote on a final map. I'm in agreeance with you. That's what I want in a process as well.
I am too. And the only reason why I made that motion like that is just for the sake of Leonard. We weren't looking eye to eye, but I felt like that comment was towards me about the ninth hour because I said that last week. The only reason why I mentioned the horseshoe, I was just explaining to Carlos, is that we're not done. It's, it's a possibility that we can do it. And so the reason, my motion is to say, let's not automatically do it because nobody has seen the horseshoe. But let's go back out. And if that's possible, we can add that horseshoe to it. So that's why I made the motion like I did.
Thank you.
That I'm not voting for.
So, so, oh, go ahead. Sorry, Carrie, go ahead. I was just asking timeline because I, I want to be able to understand this whole process. When would we send it out to public comment? Would, if it's Thursday, great. If there's a snow day, what happens? And then when do we come back to draw it and when do we go back to public comment?
I think we have to figure all those things out. So right now, we're scheduled for Thursday. Fernando can jump in here. If we, if the weather doesn't hurt us, we'd have our public hearing Thursday. At the same time, staff needs to start looking at our calendars to try to schedule a map drawing session, maybe even next week after that public hearing. And then also start to work to schedule the next public hearing. Could that be since? Go ahead, Michael.
I just want to say this, even if we have weather on Thursday, we still have a call-in option, right?
Yes.
So I would say we need to move forward the process so we can still vote on a map by March twenty-ninth because people, public, still have access to, to call in to whatever, unless the world shuts down.
Unless we're not able to get there.
Yeah, well.
I'm technically the only person that has to be there in person.
And I want to compliment Carrie Moon. Carrie, listen, I'm going to give you a compliment. I want you to really, really pay attention, okay? I want to compliment Councilmember Moon, who from the very beginning built in enough time for us on the calendar in the event there were legal challenges. Now, we didn't know that there would be intra-challenges. But you still helped with, with, with that insight. And so that's my compliment for the next two months to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I tell you, you're my friend, but I don't want too many people to know that.
Okay, go ahead, Leonard.
Thursdays, what's the format in the agenda? Because I'm traveling Thursday evening, going to the horseshoe in Vegas, I think, probably.
Really?
Yeah, just get, get out of this. But, um, what, what is the agenda?
Go ahead, Fernando, for, for a public hearing on Thursday. It's just a public hearing on redistricting.
It's merely to receive.
Just public comment, just like we did before, Leonard. Just public comment, Leonard.
The public's agenda consists of one, a public hearing and proposals.
Give him a hotspot. He can take a hotspot. We want you in on this, okay?
Yeah, yeah. So I've got a motion on the floor from Chris.
Which is the original motion, right?
Which was pretty much the original motion, but yeah. It's better.
So then can I add a friendly amendment to that, that we come back to draw it so that it's a vote? Y'all don't pull my leg.
Okay, motion. Okay, motion. The motion on the floor from Councilmember Nettles is to conduct the public hearing as soon as Thursday is currently scheduled with both version two and version three as maps, no amendments, hear from the public comment, and then immediately following, as soon as we can schedule it, do another public, open drawing session of maps where we consider amendments, including this horseshoe idea and others. And then we would have another public hearing again, if we can conduct consensus there.